The Monday, December 9, 2024, regular meeting of the Paris City Council is hereby called to order at 5:30 p.m. For the purpose of this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Agenda item number two, invocation, Jean Anderson will lead us in the invocation, followed by the United States Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by a city council. Please rise.
May we pray? Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for each and every blessing that you give us. We thank you and praise you for you're the Creator and sustainer of this universe. We thank you for blessing our nation, Father, from its very beginning, and we pray, Father, that you would continue to do so and to watch over us, for we live in perilous times. We pray for our council tonight, as they conduct the city's business, that you would guide and direct them, and, Father, might all that we do and say be glorifying to your name, if we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas fire, our pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Citizens' forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city council members or employees, as well as an individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for citizens' forum. If necessary, the city council may convene in the executive session under Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there is anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will now close the citizens' forum. Consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council, with such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove an item from the agenda for discussion? Seeing none, I'll hear a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion? Motion in a second for Ms. Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries six-zero. Moving on to the regular agenda. Agenda item number 13. Discuss, continue the public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of RT Fitness LLC for a zoning change from an office District O to a general retail District GR in the Phelps, Fort, and Varner addition, Block 3, Lot 3, LCAD 11342, located at 950 East Austin. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. This application is a zoning change, and the applicant is requesting to change it from the current zoning, which is office district, to general retail district. The purpose of this rezoning is to make it much more compatible with the general retail zoning district. Currently, under office district, it is required that, in case they want to do anything, it will go under special use permit. And therefore, they are requesting that they change this application process to rezone it to an appropriate and that will allow any future development or use type to be much more compatible with that use purpose, and that is what is before you today. The Planning and Zoning Commission has looked at it and is recommending approval for this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will continue the public hearing and ask anyone wishing to speak about this item, to please come forward, state your name and address, and we will now open up the public hearing. I will now close the public hearing. Is there any discussion, council? Any questions? If not, I'll hear a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six-zero. Item number 14. Discuss, conduct, a public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of the City of Paris to rezone properties south of Kaufman Street between First Street Southeast and Third Street Southeast from a one-family dwelling district number one SF1 to a central area district, CA. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Mayor Protem and council. This is the already-known reason, and it went to the PNZ, and they looked at the proposed result and map formation that city staff prepared. There were two of them that we did from the workshop. And so, based on our technical advice, we presented two maps to the PNZ, and they selected the one that staff recommended. And so, we have, to simplify it, we've divided it into three different groups, sections, by the district. And so, this is one of the districts that was created, and that is the central area district, which is south of Kaufman Street to Sherman Street, between First and Third Streets. And that is what is before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing and ask anyone wishing to speak about this item to please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, is there any discussion? Any questions regarding this matter? If not, I'll hear a motion.
Aye.
We got a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six-zero. Item number 15. Discuss, conduct, a public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of the City of Paris for a zoning change from a one-family dwelling district number one SF1 to a multifamily dwelling district, District number one MF1, in Historic District number two HD2 on LCAD parcels 16255, 16421, and 16571. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, so this is a continuation of the map that staff presented. This is the second phase of the rezoning change, which is to create a special section for those multifamily units already existing within the HD2 district. So, when we looked into it, we realized that these are already existing multifamily uses, and if we decide to rezone the whole area, including this one, it will create a non-conforming use. So, we have selected this already-existing multifamily to be zoned as multifamily, separate from the other ones that we're going to talk about it on the next phase. So, this is what is before you. PNZ is recommending approval for this particular zoning district, which will be those specific properties listed over there, which is parcel numbers 16255, 16421, and 16571, already existing. And that is what is before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing and ask anyone wishing to speak about this item to please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hello, this is Michael King. I had one question on one particular property, and I'm sorry, I don't know the ID number of the property, but it is the commercial building, which was the Charles McShane Grocery Store, and then eventually Washington Street, Washingtonshire, on the corner of Third Southeast and Washington, which is included in the Historic District. So, I don't know if that one has been accepted from this change. It really should be a commercial property, but I don't actually know what the current zoning is on it. Do you happen to know? Yeah, I don't have the map here.
Are you sure?
It's on the corner of Third Southeast. Is this Third?
Somewhere here.
The Third Southeast and Washington should be right there.
If it's not this one, then it's... What use is it?
It is... Well, it's used in my business.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic?
Sure. Yeah, I just said it's used in my business, so I just wondered... I actually don't even know if it is considered commercial, but I had to get, you know, a use permit for that when I began using it. Anyway, I just wanted to know if there's any kind of change that needs to be made to it to make it agree with the actual case, or if this is going to disrupt what I'm doing now.
Nothing will disrupt what you're doing now, because if the zoning has been changed from what it was when you initially began your operations, you would be a legal non-conforming use, and you wouldn't have to stop what you're doing.
Okay.
So, what business do you have there?
I'm sorry?
What business do you have there?
Well, I do have rental property, and so I use that as a shop and storage building currently. I really would like, in the future, to return it to a little community store, just for the historical case, you know, just for the interest of that. But, I mean, of course, I guess that can be addressed at that time. Yeah, that's where we are.
Hopefully, that answers the question, but thank you for coming out. That's good that you have future plans for that property, and it's good to establish that relationship to be able to make sure that, hey, we're in good compliance on code for that, for zoning, so.
Yeah.
So, Stephanie, would that affect him, his future plans? If he wanted to turn that into a store, would what we're doing today affect him on that?
If it is within the HD2, because I can't visualize it...
I'm trying to think, too.
Assuming that it is, it would, but he's always free to come in and ask for a zoning change, or, you know, if that's allowed with the SUP, we can always address that at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
All right.
Is there anyone else? All right. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, is there any discussion on this any further? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and... Seeing none, I'll go ahead and hear a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We've got a motion?
Second.
We've got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six-zero. Agenda item number 16. Discuss, conduct, a public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of the City of Paris to change the zoning of multiple properties within the Historic District number two HDS, south of Sherman Street to Hearne Street, and between southwest First Street and southeast Third Street, save and accept LCAD parcel number 16255, 16421, and 16571, as well as LCAD parcel numbers 16272, 16276, 16279, 16585, 16583, 16586, 16591, 16592, 16595, 16597, 16599, 16601, 16603, and 16604 from a one-family dwelling district number one SF1 to a one-family dwelling district number two SF2. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. This is a continuation of the zoning change process. This is the largest portion of the three divisions that we talked about. Besides the central area district on top and the multifamily, all the rest in this HD zoning historic district are going to be zoned SF2. And so, the gentleman here, his property is within this one. Technically, number one, we need to find out that he's saying his property is used or zoned as commercial. We need to find out whether it was officially zoned as commercial, or it was grandfathered in as commercial. The legality of it first. Irrespective of that, if he's using it as commercial, it will be grandfathered in under this zoning. Or if he wants to, in future, develop it, he will have to come to PNZ and council for consideration anyway. So, this is what is before you today. The largest portion of this HD2 Historic District is going to come under, if approved, is going to come under the SF2 zoning district, and this is much more appropriate for the area. And that is what is before you today.
And just to clarify, previously, council had rezoned this entire HD2 as SF1, and the reason for making these properties, and the majority of them are residential properties, SF2 is because SF1 made so many of them noncompliant with the zoning because of the lot size. So, the difference between SF1 and SF2 is lot size.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I will open the public hearing and ask anyone wishing to speak about this item to please come forward. I will now close the public hearing. Council, is there any discussion? I just wanted to say one thing. I know this was a really tough task to go through all this. Really appreciate you guys for taking hold on this and really taking this by the hand and making sure we go through each step correctly, vetting it, talking to the citizens about any kind of concerns there are, and especially those that have been really pushing for this, that, hey, we got some good safety measures here against the whole multifamily process in this Historic District. I know there's been a lot of people that have been battling this for quite some time, and hopefully, this is a positive win for folks here in this central district and Historic District, so. It's good. Any comments, any questions? If not, I'll hear a motion.
So moved.
We got a motion? We got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five-zero. Moving on to agenda item number 17. Discuss renaming of the City Hall Annex Building and provide direction to staff. So, I know that Mayor Protem... So I know that Mayor Protem Savage and Council, Council Member Norman had helped to bring this on the agenda. Mayor Protem Savage just had to step away for a moment, and he should hopefully be joining us, just had a little, little issue he had to handle. But I'll, I'll speak, I want to pass the, the torch on to you, if, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. If I miss anything, you, you chime in, okay? Mayor Protem Savage had called me a while back, and, and I think he had a really good point on this, and this is in regards to Gene Anderson, and, and, in memory of him and his time here, served, and, and really doing a great job for our community, representing our, our city, and, and putting so much time and effort into what he has done to better this, this community. I know he's, he's nearing the end of his time, unfortunately, here. We'd like to maybe have another year, if at all possible, but I know he's ready to go. But this is something that, that Mayor Protem Savage, a few on council, and then all of us, I think, think that this, this could be a really good idea. I want to hear this discussion organically and, and open this up to council, but we'd wanted to do something nice for, for you, sir, and you've, you've really paid your debt here to this community, and, and we've grown so much as a community because of your service. So I kind of want to open this up and have a good discussion amongst council and see, you know, what, what is that side of council, and what do you all think about this proposition?
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a wonderful idea, long, long overdue.
I agree.
I'm not sure he is aware of what we're talking about.
Gene, are you, are you, are you sure, do you know what we're kind of discussing right now?
First I heard.
First, okay, well, so you have heard of this now, so that's good. I don't know how you feel about this. I know you're kind of behind the scenes, you're, you're more of a behind the scenes type of gentleman, but you really have done a fantastic job for our community, and you, you've led us in some, some pretty tough times and some great times.
First of all, I feel honored you would even discuss it. I used to joke with Grayson when he was here, that I wanted this alleyway back here named Anderson Alley, you know, so you wouldn't forget me when I'm gone, so I think this is a step up, you know, for that, from that, but I do appreciate, you know, the thought, you know, do whatever you want to do. I don't know if I'll hang around for a whole year, but I've already talked to, to Rose, and I told her I'd stay for a while longer until they kind of, she gets in transition then, so. Anyway.
Well, we, we genuinely appreciate you, and I know this is the initial steps of this conversation, but I just want to tell you, this council, and I know councils from the past have really, you know, touted your name highly and, and for good measure. It's very well deserved, and you're a hard work and gentleman. We absolutely appreciate your time and service to our community, so.
I thank you.
This will now leave a lasting impression for generations to come, and that building is because of you.
Whatever you all want to do.
Thank you. Well, it sounds like we have a, a good unanimous decision here to, to maybe hopefully kick the, kick the ball back to staff and maybe get a resolution together for the future and be able to, to name that after Mr. Anderson. Good? All right. Agenda item, agenda item number eighteen, convene into executive session pursuant to section, agenda item eighteen A, section five five one point oh seven one of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice from the city attorney about one pending or contemplated litigation and or two on matters in which the duty of an attorney to her, to her client under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with the chapter to it, cards, liquidated And then eighteen B, section five five one point oh seven four of the Texas Government Code, to deliberate the appointment, the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee to it, the city manager position.
You need a motion to bring A off of the table.
Yes, so.
I'm moved.
We've got a motion.
My second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. All right. The time is five fifty-three, and we will now convene into executive session.
It is 7:06. We will convene into open session. There's no action to be taken on anything from executive session. Item number 20, consider and approve future events for the City Council and our city staff pursuant to resolution number 2004-081. Does anyone have anything? I would like to propose that we hold a special meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, next Tuesday at 5:30 p.m. That would be, I believe, the 19th.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, I apologize, seventeenth.
It should be a short meeting.
Yes. And, uh... No problem. I think aside from that, did anyone else have anything else that they wanted to...
I did want to ask a question just so, to city staff, about our relationship with the Lamar County Humane Association and their spay and neutering program. I understand that this year the funding didn't go through for their, the program, um, and how crucial that, that, um... That they needed it, so, um... So if we could just get a little history of how long that's been, um, in, in the budget. I don't think it was, I think they said 10,000 was what they were granted before.
Typically, they, they were budgeted 15,000, I do believe.
Okay.
Uh, over the years. I, having only been here about three years, I don't know how, how many years they've been receiving that.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, the mayor and I have been meeting with them, uh, as well as, uh, animal control supervisor. So we are working with them.
Sure.
It was something that they had brought up to me also on that side. Asked Rob, hey, can we work on this to set up a meeting? I think we met what, about two, well, about two and a half weeks ago or so, and I believe that there's some homework being done.
Yes.
And supposed to meet back again soon.
Right. And any further discussion in the full council will need to be an agenda item.
Okay.
A future agenda item, but it may be that, uh... The information will be provided to you, and there may not need to be one, but...
Sure. Uh... I just, I, I know there's a...
But it may be that, uh, the information will be provided to you and there may not need to be one.
Sure. I just, I know there's an uptick in animals loose around the city. So, there's not only, obviously their organization keeps numbers of that, but even in my own neighborhood, I've noticed a lot more cats and dogs. So, I just want to make everyone aware.
Anything else? All right. If not, I'll go ahead and hear a motion to adjourn.
Right here.
Motion in a second for Mr. Castle. All right.